There we go. We're being recorded. Okay, so um at this point, I call the meeting to order and um the first thing I'll be I'm just gonna patiently wait for Sandra to now get the agenda and agenda posted for us. Thank you.
Okay, the agenda is up.
Thank you very much. So um oh wow, I put the word tentative up there. I guess that was pretty reckless of me. Okay, um so first of all, our call to order is done. And um I still have that stuff about youth. Is this the most recent one?
This was the one I got from what you sent uh out to the city.
Okay. All right, I just the Coalition. Okay, I don't think I would have put the Coalition for Text Justice on there or the.
Well, that's the one that I took off of the. Let me see, hold on.
Next regular meeting, October eleventh?
Okay, you must have sent out the I'm tell you where I put it off of. I put it off of the thing that you and Floyd was talking about. I put it off of that email, so maybe.
How long ago?
Hold on.
They cashed the wrong document?
Yeah, because it says Bethany Lutheran Church.
We did meet at Bethany Lutheran Church two meetings ago.
Oh, that's the one you sent over to Floyd.
Yeah, I know. I send them all to Floyd. Um let me go in here. I just want to see if the one I actually have in my email is the same one.
Okay.
I think we called this to order prematurely, but I'm just gonna have to do this now in the record. Um find it.
Okay, hold on. Let me look. I'm looking further down in the email. I may have another one. Specialty, that's October eleventh. Okay. Oh, so they are all in the same email. And I just took the first one. Okay, just give me a minute.
Oh, I didn't know I sent more than one.
Did you 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 and Floyd keep using the same email? Y'all don't have a y'all don't do a a uh new email link.
Yeah, I'm just looking. I think I have to have.
I got it.
You got it.
November eighth, I got it. Regular meeting, District Four. Okay, uh. Okay, I got it. Hold on. I got it. Let me just. Copy this. Okay, let me.
Oh, you have the hard copy. Could you have an extra copy for me? Are they all out there? Nice prepared. Okay, let me just get that. Thank you, sir.
Okay, do you do you see it now?
I'm looking at the same thing on the screen right now.
You don't see where it says agenda? And not tentative?
Uh, no, I just see the old one.
Let me stop that one then and.
Yeah. They get to unsure one, then share the other one.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's gonna be more current, right? We're dealing with current things. Okay, I think we got. Yes, we have it. It's great. Okay, so here we are. Um so calling to order again. This time with the um correct information. Um. Yeah, seven fourteen. Yeah, trying to push toward that seven oh oh number still. All right, and it's usually a technical issue. Um. Almost always when we start late, but I should start earlier because I know there's gonna be technical issues. So it's still my fault. Okay, um a introduction of City Council President um or her representative is Bradley or Keisha there? Hmm, they're not. Okay, um normally somebody from the current and I know Letitia Johnson is her future council representative, but someone currently on the council should be here and it didn't happen. Okay, now I'm gonna move along then. Um. Next part, we have a introduction of um guest elected officials. I am going to include um officials elect, I guess is the correct way of putting it instead of elected officials, because um I think that's especially appropriate post-election. I'm turning I'm moving around here. Because I'd like to. There's a camera on here. Um and actually, I'm gonna see if I can even turn the view around. Now just hold it like this because it's in selfie mode as far as I know right now. So um I just like ask people that you need to stand up and introduce yourself to everyone else here. Um. I will start with our City Council Member-Elect, Letitia Johnson, representing District Four on the City Council, and she just stood up and waved.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Letitia Johnson, District Four, Councilmember-elect. I'm just glad to be here with you all this evening and I'm proud to be partnering with you.
Can't hear.
Good, I wanted confirmation that you were able to hear through the um tablet mic.
Nope, can't hear.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Letitia Johnson, District Four, City Council-elect. I'm glad to be here with you this evening. I look forward to partnering with you all. And I am seated in the office uh that is slated to be by the beginning of December.
Okay, thank you very much. Um oh, me, I'm looking. You said beginning of December.
That was my question.
Clarify that for us?
Sure, because uh District Four and District Seven have uh council members who have vacated their seats. District Four and District Seven um elected council members from the November third election will be seated prior to January because we have vacancies.
Okay, thank you very much. So yeah, the um so the council will be um filling vacancies um be, you know, based upon who got elected, which makes sense. It's a good idea. That's a great idea. All right, thank you. Thank you. Um council member-elect. Um okay, and then also, we also have now um for this body, the Community Advisory Council. Um I'll state right here, I did not run again. Gregory Cresswell did not run again. Um the one person, first of all, to get his name on the ballot is here, and would you like to introduce yourself?
Good evening, good evening, everybody. My name is Dennis M. Bryant. Uh was I was elected a Community Advisory Councilman, District Four, on November second. I'm looking forward to working with everybody in the community so we can restore some pride here on the east side.
Thank you. And we also have candidates who are writing candidates and based upon the number of writing candidates, they're pretty much guaranteed to have won because there is a upper limit of five people who can get elected. We had fewer of that than that qualified on the ballot. Um Adrian. Introduce yourself.
Good evening all. My name is Adrian Green. I'm the uh I was a writing candidate for the Community Advisory Council in District Four. Uh while I haven't officially received word that I victorious, I'm relying on Ms. Bowman here to uh give me sound information and uh preparing to serve District Four uh in any way, shape, or form, being necessary. So I'm also a board member and treasurer of the Morning Side Community Organization. I don't know uh if I'll be able to maintain that position being a uh Community Advisory Council member, but I'll do my best to uh represent District Four uh to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you. Um and I want to double check that, but I believe it's only city offices or it's public offices that you can't concurrently hold. I don't think community offices present a problem. But I can double check it.
I don't think because um I was on the board of Eaton Gardens and on the com um advisory.
Yeah, uh. Yeah, cuz I'm on I'm the president over at the ninth and I'm on the advisory.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's only public offices where they have that kind of restriction and those are not none of those are considered public offices.
So all of us that did not were not on the ballot. We we our seat is totally given up um.
And we have to we have to look for reappointment.
You don't get.
From the county person.
Yeah, the. Go ahead.
No, I'm I'm not looking to be reappointed. No.
Yeah, the um as far as if you are not the only only city government positions present a conflict. And so if you're not in any other city government position, then it's not a problem. The um by the way, I would stay on it. I you know, I'm saying what legally should happen. But if they want to claim you don't have any write-in votes, which I find would find amazing, then you'd want to be prepared to challenge that because I do know write-in votes get undercounted. And we don't want you to be undercounted. Yes.
Scotty, do you have any idea how many write-in candidates there were for the year?
Yes, absolutely. There were three. And there was actually a fourth, but she did not hand in the declaration of intent. And that is um so and I will be talking about her a little bit later, but just to um get that part clear. And also, um.
Is it me, Scotty?
Hold on. Your dentist had his hand up?
Yeah, uh so so Scotty, with the almost six hundred write-in votes for the district, that has to be, is that that's is that around three people or do it through this?
There might be people who wrote in, especially when they saw they could put up to five names. There may have been people writing and who knows whom. We I don't know. They gotta be canvassed. The Board of Canvassers ultimately will canvas the vote. But like I said, I think it would be highly irregular if any of the um properly documented writing candidates did not get in there. It would be very strange and would I I would challenge that. Um, okay, so next, we also I think we have one more who is also a reelect. Is Ms. Harris in there yet? Maybe not. She'll be taking this meeting off. Um, okay, Jocelyn Harris is our um also our senior member, and she will be an elected member via the write-in process as well. Um, and so that is one member is actually gonna be returning. I guess she'll be the the bit of continuity to the whole thing. Um and then we also have Tamika Black who um who contacted me and said that she wanted to um want wanted to be clear that um she does want to be um on the next CAC, and I told her that while if she didn't get her declaration of intent in, that it'll be purely at the discretion of the City Council and of the next City Council member that I would I will be making a resolution regarding um that matter later on, but even a resolution is completely unbinding, whether it be from this CAC or from the newly seated CAC on January first. Um.
But Scotty, I also fall in that category.
Oh, you also wanted to be a write-in?
Yeah, but I didn't get my uh declaration.
Ah, well, see, now that kind of makes my little promise to Tamika a little shakier.
And I and people actually wrote my name in.
Yeah, well, hers too, you see, and I didn't know that you were running again. Um, okay, we got well, we'll talk about that when we get there. Let me get back to the agenda real quick. Um. Walk around here. Okay, so that takes us on to um. I'm looking at um adoption of agenda. And so let's look, let's go through this. I'm gonna say it out loud for the benefit of um those who don't have a hard copy or also just kind of for the record. Um and I think it'll help clarify my thoughts if I do this. Um. All right, so next up would be um well, we have adoption of agenda. What is that? Well, the next thing after that would be approval of prior minutes, which is standard. Uh presentations, hearings, and discussions. I don't have one scheduled. Uh, members and council representative are encouraged to request presentations. That's just something I put in every week. Um. And then I have unfinished business. Planning letter or news conference on inavailability of sidewalks and other apparent unfairness concerning residents living north by ninety-four in District Four that has turned into a perennial item. But anyway, I put it there and we could talk about that as far as before finalizing the agenda. I mean, not in detail, just whether or not you want to have it in there. Um, current community concerns um and plans of action, that's in there. Um and then under new business, I put down CAC election results, which we sort of did, but we can go back over them. Um, oh, and this is something I'm gonna have to look in my email in a minute here, but I don't think I have an answer to this yet. Uh, but we can discuss it. Um how redistricting will affect the future of the CAC? And C um under new business will be um discussion of youth youth advisor position looking forward. And I think there was something in the minutes that alludes to that too, but anyway, it's there. And then seven would be reports, if any, and then finally discussing the location of the next meeting. It would be really great to leave this meeting knowing where the next one will be. Um. But any case, I have my little commentary while going over that, maybe to give it some life. Um, so. Any motions regarding the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, so like, yeah, Gregory and was that Sandra?
Yes.
We're we're competing to make those motions. Well, okay, Sandra got it in first and Gregory has it um seconded. Okay, so that part we're passed. Now, um that takes us right on to minutes. And do you have the minutes available, Sandra, to pull up here?
Yes, I have the minutes.
Oh, oh, you made the motion in second. You know what? Gregory just made a very important point of order. We're gonna back up quickly. Could I take things for granted? But that's not correct. I shouldn't do that. I um so we need to um make a vote. Um. So first of all, is there any discussion on accepting the agenda as as presented? There being none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, and by the way, actually, we're gonna have to make this a roll call vote because it's partial. It's a hybrid meeting, so. Um, I'm gonna say all those in favor, but then I'm gonna go down the list. Um indicate by saying I, and if you're opposed, say nay, and we'll just go down the list on the approving the agenda as presented. Uh first council member, um CAC Secretary um Cresswell. And um and then I'll move on to the um virtual realm here. Sandra Handy?
Yay.
And I'm Karen Knox.
Yay.
And I don't think is anyone did Ms. Harris show up yet? No, actually, I'm looking at. I don't have to ask. I'm looking here. I can see everyone who's in here. Um, okay, so that being said, then we'll just go on to um.
And your and your vote?
Oh, and I'm voting. Um, yeah, and I'm voting in favor of accepting it. Um, I'm just looking here to see if there's anyone else. No, no one else is on the meeting. Okay, so um. So present um from the community, by the way, also, we have um Ms. Judy Pencil and um Erica Bryant, right?
Yes, that is correct.
And I'm sorry, your name, if you wanna, if you want, if you'd like.
Karen Patterson, president of Dickerson Black Club.
Oh, fabulous. And Karen Patterson, President of Dickerson Black Club is here. Um, great to meet you. Um. And so we're all. Okay, so now we'll go on to the next part of things, which will be um. Oh, minutes. Yes, we're looking at the minutes. Um and they are displayed now on the screen for people over in Zoom world. Um, and on the recording. Um so great. Um Secretary Cresswell, would you like to go over the minutes as you have them right now? Yeah, I'll point this in your direction.
Uh the news conference is seven sixteen. President. Uh the second place was sending. And Justin Harris. Uh the guest in particular, beating word by Islam, a justice charged with criminal abuse. Stanley Harris, Stanley Harris, Mr. Brett Johnson, it's all Joe. Mrs. John, Bradley Merle, she is the city employee coffee staff, I'm sorry, creative staff. Presented by the director of uh Council President. She gave out her phone number, as you can see, and my uh I hope I'm placing this name correctly, Mardu, Mardu, M as in Michael, O U, D as in David, O U, Bonique. It's good, I'm putting his name, so he's the president and the spokesperson of the decriminalized nature Detroit. Motion to adopt the agenda was made by Sandra Turner Handy amended to the agenda adopted motion. Sandra changed the meeting, had it from special meeting to a regular meeting. Uh it was seconded by Johnson to change it from special to a regular meeting. The vote was unanimous. Was to adopt the agenda as amended, made by me, Greg Cresswell, seconded by Justin Harris. The vote was unanimous. Motion to adopt corrected minutes made by was made by Justin Harris, seconded by my secretary, Chris, and the votes were unanimous. Now, the topics for that particular night was flooding updates. Uh the first topic was, uh I mean, the first person spoke to us, speaking only, was Bob Sisler. He believes government has failed the citizen. He blames population. He noted that Reagan, President Reagan and their young work together to serve the citizens in Detroit as it pertains to the water department. Justin Harris believes that the state senator Stephen, state senator Stephen Chan was helpful with the grants, a a portion of ten million dollars was issued to pursue Detroit affected by the flood. There are there are still health issues, damages to houses, suits, backups, etc. And Justin made a point that FEMA is moving to South Dakota. According to Sandra, uh some people are forced to take out loans that some cannot afford. Justin also spoke of a letter being created to send to the public person. It also includes a press release. City staffer Bradley Merle asked for a copy of the letter and press release to assist in an effort to receive the grant. Getting a response. Also, there is a deadline. The date uh is dated as eleven, twelve, twenty twenty one. The Eastside Community Network Team, their phone number is three one three five seven one fifty eight hundred. They are willing to help out. The CAC E four is willing to sign the letter two by Richmondville with a timeline. Mr. Stanley Harris, he mentioned that he has a personal involvement. There was a flood about four to five, four or five years ago in the basement as a result of the constant flooding. He has a foot infection. He has hired contractors to try and solve the problems and contact the city. Justin made a point of highlighting health issues and decent manner. There was a resource fair at a deep lake site. Sandra Turner, the deputy of Stanford Chain. Change, she held a press conference in the Justice Charles Davidville. Election results, election issues, guest speaker at proposal, proposal E, the president and the spokesperson were personally with again. Forgive me, sorry, but Mardu, they quit. Uh God forgive me, I mispronounced his name. He was uh he's part of the decriminalization nature in Detroit advocating for the passing of proposal E. It had effect against depression. In addition, it helps to fight PTSD. Mr. Johnson, Mr. Brett Johnson also spoke of this. He said this is the civilization, uh decriminalization effort by putting this on the ballot. And then pass it, it would be a low party when it comes to law enforcement by the police department and county security office. Uh Justin Harris, she made the issue, this ballot issue gave her pause. She had lots of questions, how they get on the ballot so quickly. We don't want another drug inducing to our community was, and these are all quotes. Mr. Brett Johnson, we will provide you with the information to uh Josh in about in twenty four hours. He mentioned that Mr. Mr. Robert Schumay, if I heard his name correctly, has suffered PTSD and his family suffers from ADHD. Uh to get the issue on the ballot, he said that they needed three, three thousand eight hundred two six shows. Uh he said that we got double that number. And he mentioned that the federal government had the history of misinformation when it comes to drugs. Scotty may mention a proposal R and S. Some discussion was made about the vote and also the issue of questionable property, admitting practices, sidelines, producing, etc. And Justin Harris, Sandra Turner Handy and Scotty Bowman spoke to some voters, both proposals, and their opinion are confusing. Sandra said that she used to work in the state legislature, the state lawmaking body. And so she understands how the world can be. Uh she asked, did we get the name of a youth member? Scotty said, no. Sandra, who is and works on the Denver School Advisory Group, will contact Mrs. Man, Mrs. Manhattan about selecting a youth member. Justin, she talked about the speed bars. Sandra states that DPW is picking the signs. I clarify the difference between between humps and bumps. The DPW director lives in our district. It was brought up. And uh it can be scheduled, a DPW director for one of our meetings. Speed, house, and bus will not be located near police and fire station. Bradley made some good points about their possible locations. She said the criteria for location are as follows. Using data approach, citizens' requests, number of children in the neighborhood, vacancy on the street, the proximity of schools and parks, and class history. The phone number to DPW is three one three 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 four three nine zero one. Commissioner Johnson, she spoke about the nine one, of course, uh DPW should be contacted, and she can also vote proposal two, proposal S two. And then the only stretch that explains proposal R. A motion to adjourn made by Sandra and seconded by Johnson, and the vote was unanimous. And the test that the adjournment was nine four P P M.
Okay, I found one thing. And by the way, I just realized I'm moving this tablet around like it's a camera, but while those watching on Zoom could see some things, I know the recording as long as there's a document up there, the document is what will show up on the recording. Still here is talking over the document. I just realized that after I had people standing up and pointing this and all this. Um, okay, and we had the agenda up earlier. Now we have minutes up. So um I did have one thing I wanted to um recommend being um modified, which was in the discussion about the youth member. It wasn't that I didn't have the name of one. It's that that we had two names originally. And one of those people no longer is interested, and the other one has not been, we've not been able to reach the other person again. So because we have the only one person is not interested and one person is not reachable. The um originally chosen youth members are not really an option for us. And that's what I was bringing up. Um. If anyone has a name, is there anyone and so well, here, no, I'm going out of order. Let me stay in order. So that's all I would want to change in the minutes. I don't know if you could kind of phrase that in there succinctly, Sandra? Since you now got the computer, even though Secretary Cresswell usually would do that. And I see also um a comment from um Councilmember-elect Letitia Johnson. Yes, ma'am.
Can't hear.
Oh, um, yeah, please add Ms. Johnson to the, um, attendance. Also, I did notice there's, I, I don't think I named everybody in the room right now, earlier when I was introducing, uh, did you want to be introduced next to the lamp over here at the end of the couch? Okay, okay, thank you, I just was checking.
I could not hear what Letitia said.
Oh, I'm sorry. Letitia said that her name was not listed as being among those attending in the minutes, and it should have been.
Oh, okay.
And I concur. Yeah, so, yeah, it comes out that way, yeah. So, was there, um?
Okay, I will add her.
If anyone agrees with these changes, I mean, it's also an objection is allowed. I'm just being informal, because I don't think there are any, but if there are, please let me know. Um, yes?
Okay, I am going to highlight changes, so we know that they, um, that was wrong. So they, so we know they are changes.
Okay, fabulous. Oh yeah, I see you doing that right now. Actually, first of all, my name has no W in it.
Okay.
All right, and, um, and not that I had two, two youth members, um, Scotty Bowman mentioned we had appointed.
Had recommended.
Had, had recommended, right, thank you, for appointment to youth members.
Okay.
And that one is no longer interested, and we were, I was unable to reach the other one. Yeah, just for FYI and background, that goes back to, you don't have to put this in the minutes, I'm just doing this for anyone listening. Um, it goes back to a meeting we had in, or meetings we had in January to get set up, and the next CAC will need to go through a similar process wherein they collect from members of the community, a list of names to be recommended, um, for youth member and senior, um, issues representative. And we had actually, and that list actually has to be submitted to the, um, to the clerk in the city council, um, by the end of January. And the council, usually under the instruction of our council representative, um, is then supposed to, um, appoint people from said list. Um, the former council member did not follow that process. He eventually did appoint a senior issues representative very far along in the year, and, um, and while she's a wonderful member, and I'm happy that she is elected to serve in, starting in 2022, again, um, uh, she was not on that list, so he still didn't follow the process, though, I mean, I, you know, no, nothing personal about that person. Um, and so just to be clear, coming upward then, our new, and I'm, you know, our new council representative, who is present, will need to be, um, alert to the need to, um, appoint people from said list. And the new CAC will need to be alert to the need to get somebody, um, to get names, not just one name, but get names of, of potential candidates for those offices to the council and the clerk in a timely manner, which is going to be before the end of the year. We, I literally emailed our finalized and signed list at the eleventh hour. So, so that should not, that's bad form, no one else should do it that way, but nonetheless, um, we met the requirement. Um, one problem we face that the new CAC will not face is that we will have, um, you will potentially have a quorum, so our new CAC members need to be vigilant to make sure the other elected members are all present, because all four of them will be needed. And that they, oh, not only present, need to get sworn in ahead of the first meeting.
Right.
For otherwise, the legal department might make issue with anything that group does. They were making issue with things we did, though we had all elected members participating, that would be all three of them. So, having four prevents a lot of problems, and I'm very happy to see four get elected. Um, okay, moving ahead then, is there anything else about the minutes? Yes? Oh, okay, I, I know we, we're being that formal about it, but okay, um, Secretary Cresswell makes that a motion, I second it.
Did, did, did you make, is the motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Yeah, I, I think it would be better to just go right to that. Is that okay? Is there any more changes recommended? Because if there's no objection, I could see us simply putting in, and she's got it highlighted, recommended changes, and then we could go to a vote. I mean, if there's no objection, if there's objections, of course, everything gets formal. Okay, um, are there any other recommended changes? Okay, and then I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended. I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to accept the October CAC minutes as amended.
Okay, been moved by Sandra Turner Handy and seconded by Gregory Cresswell. Okay, that takes us on to, oh, gosh. All right, we're going to do a roll call vote, and I'm sorry, I lost that part. Okay, um, so just, let's see, I'll just kind of name names, um, right in front of me, Gregory Cresswell, how do you vote? Um, and then now Sandra Turner Handy on Zoom, how do you vote?
Yeah.
And Karen Ax. Was a yay from Karen Ax? Karen Ax? Oh, wow. I think she may have left.
Or her internet may have dropped, uh.
I'm looking on here. Yeah, what's happening here? Yeah, um, that is an informal motion until she shows back up again, so we don't have a quorum. But we will proceed as a community meeting until such point, and hopefully there will be a point where the quorum is restored, at which point we'll ask if she approves what we just did. Um, okay, or get her vote independently, that's how we should do it, on each motion, and see if it still passes. Okay, um.
We'll go back to the agenda.
Back to the agenda.
Hmm, want to make sure I pull up the right one.
Oh, you're not gonna pee in the room. Oh, oh, the agenda's taken. Okay, so next up on the agenda, we had presentation during discussions, and we hadn't really planned any to be announced. Members and council representative encouraged to request to have, okay, whatever, that's just what I always put in here. And then we move on to unfinished business. Um, and there's something I need to bring in here, and I know I should have added it to the agenda, so it might just have to go into new business. Um, yeah, so maybe I'll just wait until new business, because I can still add from the floor at new business, even if it's not on the agenda. Um, there's actually, it's pretty important, and I just kind of went by there. Um, so we'll just go ahead, unfinished business, first of all. Um, is there any new thoughts on the matter of planning letter or news conference on inavailability of side lots and other apparent unfairness concerning residents living north of I-94 in District Four?
It is still a concern, however, right now, uh, the land bank is, is supposedly offline because they were hacked, so you really can't go in and prove anything at this point, because they were hacked, so.
Can you repeat that? Did you just say the land bank was hacked?
Yeah, their site was hacked.
Whoa.
Yeah, that happened, I got a email from them, because I had inquired about a lot, which I told you guys, and I got an email from them saying that they would have to get back to me, but their site would be down due to, I forgot how they worded it, but it had, it meant they had got hacked.
Network maintenance or something like that?
No, 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 they didn't, no, they said what had happened, they didn't make it nice, they weren't politically correct. They said exactly what happened, that their site had been, their site had been, they didn't say intruded on, their site had been hacked, basically, so.
Okay, so that's the update on that. Any other comments about this idea of planning a letter to news conference on the inavailability of silos and other apparent unfairness concerning residents north of I-94 in District Four?
Uh, I think at this point that we should hold off until our new city council is seated, and then make a, a proper public comment concerning that to city council.
Okay, now, in your opinion, then, would you be doing, want to do that after, since we have vacancies being filled, um, in December? Would you want to make that something, maybe just turn it into a topic of the December meeting?
Yes, and we can move forward to, once the full city council is seated, to take it in as public comment.
Okay, and when the full new city council is seated, this body will also be replaced?
Oh, that's true. That's, we will still have people representing us that are our voice, correct?
Right, and some of them are here today, so that helps. We got Dennis Bryant, we have Adrian Green, and, um, by the way, I said Tamika Black, that is not how she likes to be called, I just realized, I was looking up, her name is Tammy Black.
Oh, Tammy, yeah.
Yeah, she's the person who's interested, but so are you, so this will be, um, interesting. I guess you can, um, both put.
Well, I'm old enough not to be, I'm old enough, I'm old enough to be recommended as the senior advisor, you know?
Okay, well, if you want to work out something between you and Tammy, she, she should have been at this meeting to discuss this. I asked her to be here. Um, but I, I, I'll just move on, I shouldn't have, um, even brought up what anyone else is supposed to do, I should let people do what they're gonna do, and then we'll go from there. Um, okay, so you, you, you're, let's call this a motion to table. That sounds like what you're doing.
Yes.
Okay, and you would like to table it until?
We'll bring it up at next month's meeting as a topic of concern for the incoming CAC.
Okay, so we'll do that then. All right, so we'll table that to the December meeting, that, that, that is a proper, and actually, we can even make it a date, because we already know the second Monday will be, actually, I think I have it printed, December thirteenth. So we'll, it's a motion to table to December thirteenth, now we haven't been voted on or even seconded. Is anyone seconding that? Okay.
We can't take any kind of.
Gregory Cresswell seconded it, by the way, this gentleman who said third, wish to be introduced. Timothy James Milton's here. I pleased to meet you, Timothy.
Um, okay, Scotty, we can't do a vote, because we don't have a quorum at this point.
That's true, so I guess we're gonna have an informal vote. And we got, yeah, we got a note that the quorum ended upon the approval, actually, was she even here for approval of the minutes? Okay, so after approval of the minutes, none of these are formal motions, they're informal.
No, she didn't got approved the minutes.
She wasn't? You see, um, Gregory, you can't, you couldn't, you didn't see her leave, because you're not on Zoom.
Yeah, that's what, that's when we figured out she wasn't here, when it came time.
When we were doing the roll call vote on the minutes.
Correct. She was here during the reading of the minutes, but not when we took the, uh, roll call.
Right. So we really, until she comes back, if she does, then we can go ahead and formalize the rest. Okay. All right, so that's where, where we are with that. Um, and we'll just hope for the best. But not minutes. That's when we found she was missing, was during the roll call vote. Right. Yeah. Okay, so on, so all the, the three of us present, have we all sounded off on the informal motion to table?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah, so I mean, it's one of these peculiar things where you're, we just gotta go ahead as if, um, and so on that, and I'm just gonna go ahead and proceed as if we have a quorum, even though we don't, and it's on the record that we don't. Um, so, that, that has been, um, and I will also favor the motion to table, so that the three of us agree. So actually, if she comes back, and we tell her what we did and give her a vote, um, we, really, we're talking about three out of four is already a majority, it just kind of throws things out of order. Um, yeah, so that takes us on to, um. Now, by the way, you know, I just realized, we should also note absences, and just for the record, Gregory, um, in the last minutes, well, I guess we can't, well, we didn't have a formal vote on the last minute, so.
So they can.
So informally, we need to make it a record that we had, um, that Washington Yuson was absent last time and is absent today. Just a matter of record, that we, that is a person who was a member of the CAC, so that should be a matter of record.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, so that take, that's one unfinished business item. Another unfinished business item, current community concerns and plans of action, and that's broad enough, you know, that I can actually just throw what I was gonna say in there anyway. Um, something I had forgotten to follow up on, and I'll be quite candid, um, I was rather preoccupied with the election, let's put it simply that way. Um, and now that I have time to wake up again here to other things, um, let me be quite clear, the city charter and the municipal code both indicate that us as a body, once a year, among our, among our responsibilities, once a year are to meet with, and these are, these can happen separately, or I guess conjoined, but I think they probably should have been separately, uh, a meeting with the city council, not the city council rep, that's every meet, the city council. And when, and I did send an email to them about that, um, a couple days ago, they haven't replied yet. Um, but a meeting of, and who I sent it to, I sent it to the mayor, the mayor scheduler, and the city, um, council president, and the clerk. And what I put out here is that it says that we shall have a meeting once a year with the city council, one, and two, also with the mayor. We have not done that. Or, I guess you could say, they have not done that. So, I mentioned when our next meeting was, and that, that is an allowable date that we could use, um, or any time before that, I think it should happen before the last meeting, not after. Um, and, you know, I'm not being real. Um, and you know, I'm not being real picky, but obviously, it's gotta be at a time when we can each make it. Um. And I'm not sure how flexible their schedules are, but I maybe I could just informally ask. Um, I mean, I know my work schedule, and I can basically just schedule around that, which pretty much ties up most of the. Afternoon on Monday, all of the afternoon on Monday, and part of the afternoon on Tuesday, and the morning on Thursday. There, that's mine. Um, everything else I do is optional around that. Now, um, Gregory, um, you you have schedule restrictions? Okay, and then, um, yeah, so it's variable, in other words, um, yes?
I'll be willing to be open to speak to the mayor and hear from the mayor anytime of the day of the year. Thank you.
Okay, now you're not a C A C member, though.
Not yet. Lord willing, I will be, eh?
Okay. Um.
My schedule is um, open. I can always schedule around anything I have, basically.
Okay, Sandra, um, yeah, Sandra has no time restrictions, and we can't get an answer from Ms. Knox, because at the moment, she's not present.
Oh, I do wanna, I do wanna put that in there, Scotty, that on the third Mondays are never good for me because I have a staff meeting in Lansing on those days.
Okay, put that and put that in the, Gregory, can you put that in the minutes? Cause I should look, refer back to this. When corresponding with the council and the um. So third Mondays are not good.
No.
Which pretty much between now and that, the next meeting means a week from today is not good.
Right, I'm in Lansing on the third Monday.
Okay, so not a week from today. Okay, next we have, um. I'm trying to be clear on this. Okay, next is. Well, I guess it's not anything to vote on.
Current community concerns is next.
Right, that's what we're on. All right, so I'll open this up now, um, because I mean, that's quite broad, current community concerns, plans of action. So our plan of action is that we're gonna try to schedule those meetings. Now, next up, there's gotta be other community concerns. Um. Who wishes to speak up with a community concern? And that's open to everybody, members and non-members. Uh, yes, um, Dennis Bryant. It doesn't really matter because we got the agenda displayed right now on the screen. You know, can you pull down the agenda for a moment while we're on the current community concerns and then pull it up again after? Then we can get some visual here. All right, there we go. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go and turn this around then. All right, go ahead.
From what I see in the district, uh, uh, there's a lot of community concerns, um, you know, first of all, I just wanna talk. I just wanna talk about, uh, the evictions that are, that are going on and especially down to where I stand. I stay in the South College Park, which is over on the, over there's the end of the west, west end of the district. Which is, which is Six Mile and Connor, um, Six Mile and um, Gunston. Um, so that's one of my, that's my, one of my concerns is the evictions and over, over in that, that area of district four. Um, and another, another concern is, you know, that was, that was mentioned before is the, the flooding. Uh, you know, we're gonna have a winter coming up and, you know, when that ice, when that ice and snow melts. It's gonna, it's gonna flood some, it's gonna flood some basements again, so. Those are my two communities concerns right off, right off the rip. Which is, you know, the, the upcoming winter and, you know, peop- and what so people are being evicted and. And making sure that, you know, folks have access to, you know, a- access to, to additional help other than. Other than, you know, I'm just gonna be full disclosure that I do work for D H S, so, you know, other. D H S, and I, you know, I would want residents to have more access to other resources. Other, you know, other, or easier, easier resources than to get to other than, other than D H S, that's all.
Okay, um, and I just. No, I'll put this out there. Does anyone know of, yeah, I I'm aware of some partial reimbursements on furnaces. But if, does anyone know of anything for people whose furnace was destroyed due to the um, water department's negligence? That um, about how to get the furnace completely replaced?
I do, I do.
Okay, please speak.
Go ahead, someone in the audience was speaking first.
Yeah, no, go ahead, go ahead, ladies first.
Okay, so Clear Core Detroit, which is um, right on Connors and Harper. They have the D T E program, and the D T E program for, for many of our low-income residents do replace. Furnace, non-working furnaces, hot water tanks, thermostats, central air. And I'm missing something, but yes, they will replace your furnace for free.
That's awesome. Can you please, um, Sandra, can you please, um, after the meeting, all right, I'm sorry, I should be more formal. Um, C A C member Turner Handy, would you please, um, forward by email? Everything you have on contacting people doing that?
Yes, yes, I will definitely, cause I had to send it out to a resident today whose furnace went out. Uh, I will, I will get that information out along with uh, the application and the phone number over to uh, Clear Core.
I think that will bring some peace of mind to a lot of people with um, extremely low incomes that have.
Uh, at this point, Gregory can put this number in the minutes is three, one, three. Nine, two, four. Four thousand, and that is Clear Core Detroit.
Nine, two, four, four thousand. Yeah, um, cause yeah, I mean, there's some people where, you know, the partial subsidy is enough, but others. Yeah, just don't have that. Thank you very much for that. Um, um, Dennis, was there more you had to add to that?
Uh. Well, with the Clear Corps, um. The website is clearcorpsdetroit.org.
Okay.
Oh, and they do, they actually, now D T E is also replacing windows. They're replacing windows, uh, for even for renters. As long as the landlord sign off on.
Wow, D T E is really stepping up on that. That's great.
The idea is to lower these bills, they rather lower the bills and have people paying them than people having high bills that they can't pay.
That's true. I guess getting nothing isn't as good as getting some. Um, all right, well, thank you. Any, anyone have anything to add to that?
Yeah, um, you know, if you're, if you're, if you're a home, if you're a homeowner, if you're a low-income homeowner, and if you're. And, you know, if you're, if you need to replace your, if you need to replace your furnace, uh, D H S can also, also help with uh, replacing your furnace. If you're a low-income homeowner, uh, you would just need to, you just need to churn in your copy of your D. And get, you know, get an estimate on your, on the, on the furnace. Um, it has to be at least up to thirty-five hundred dollars.
Okay.
For furnace, for furnace replacement, hot water tank, hot water tank.
Okay, um, all right, so, thank you very much. The, uh, the other, yeah, so that was a big thought, I, cause I I know people are in that situation. Okay, so, um, other community concerns, um. We got, we got a minute or two to bring these up. Yes, ma'am. Okay, introduce yourself again, cause I know you are Representative Dickerson Black Club? Karen Patterson from Dickerson Black Club. Okay, go ahead, Karen.
I know that, um, the state ego has, has come down to do some air monitoring. The uh, the air quality division. To figure out what the smell is, what it, what toxins it contains. And if it's just a odor complaint, or it is a chemical, a toxin complaint, which are handled differently.
Okay, you know, and and this makes me think of the fact that, um, leading up to any feud, and it could be before the December meeting. That it's, we need to start thinking of things and writing things down and being ready of things to bring to the attention of the city council and the mayor. Um, for that meeting, that charter mandated meeting that we never had. I'm gonna just be ready with that, okay?
And could I just, could I just add on, could I just add on to that? Um, there's, there's a group that's on, that's on Benito. That uh, that's also, that's also pushing back against, uh, uh, was, it's called Stellantis now, so.
Oh, yeah, they changed it.
Yes.
Thank you, um, Letitia Johnson, um, council member-elect.
Yes, thank you. Um, I just wanted to add to that. Um, that Eagle has cited Stellantis twice for odor violations.
Yes.
There may be a third violation that's coming very soon. Uh, but there are also some actions that are being taken on behalf of the Benito residents tomorrow. Um, I'm not at liberty to say what it is, but um, we're expecting that it'll hit the press tomorrow, so keep an eye out for that.
Yeah, and that, that's what I was saying about the violation. Eagle has to come down, they do a air quali-, they send their air quality division. And they determine if it's just a odor violation, or if it's a chemical slash toxin violation. Which carries different penal penalties.
Would you, um, for the benefit of all listening, or those who will listen, um, tell us who or what Eagle is?
Oh, Eagle is the Environmental Great Lakes. I always forget what that last E is.
Oh, it's an acronym, okay.
Yeah, it's an acronym for our old Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. Now it's called Eagle, it's the. Uh, Environmental Great Lakes. Something, I can't remember that last E.
Okay, Great Lakes Authority is gonna be like Eagle up, but. I mean, is it spelled like the bird, or is it spelled?
No, it's E, E G L E.
Okay. Ah, Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, thank you. Um, there we got. Um, that was from Erica Bryant. Okay, um, okay, well, anything, any other, um, community concerns or, um. Issues and plans of action anyone here to bring up before we move out of that?
Well, I think our plan of action should always be to support any members of our community that are in distress. However, we can support them, at least let them know that we're there to support them. So letting Benito know that the C A C is concerned and there to support them.
Okay.
Uh, just, uh, you know, just, uh, one more thing, since we have our new council, since we have our new councilwoman here in attendance. Uh, I would just suggest, and hopefully that our new, since we're gonna have, we're going to have six new members of seat council. Uh, hopefully, hopefully we'll have a more progressive council. And, you know, just, uh, you know, just to, just to, you know, put note when it comes to affordable housing in the city. Uh, I would hope that, uh, that we can get, that we can get a consensus on council to support the right to council because, um. Eighty-five percent of people. Eighty-five percent of landlords, they do have representation. And a lot of times that, a lot of times the people that are getting evicted, uh, they, they are, they are getting, they're, they feel criminalized. And I would hope that, that we would get some sort of ordinance in to have that right to council for. For, um, for tenants, uh, when they do go to court, so I just wanted to put that out there for. Everybody to, you know, just put it, put in mind.
You know, you bring that up, but it also brings to mind what a homeowner. Brought up a different issue to me that, um, and I'm not sure how this segues into that, but you're mentioning, um. Representing tenants more fully, but I also, I know of a person where she, her complaint was that she had gone on a vacation. Someone broke into her home. Changed the locks. Changed her address. And so when she returned from the vacation, someone else claimed to be a resident of the home, and she could not get the person out because the person claimed. To be now a resident of that property, and she was unable to evict this person. So there's a case where there's a non-consensual. Landlordship, I guess, or tenant landlord relationship between someone who wasn't. Really a invited tenant.
Yeah, I mean, the amendment has to be tailored in a way that, that protects, that protects seniors, uh, seniors, low income. You know, low, low income individuals, um, because, you know, like, you know, the average income. Here in the city is, uh, under thirty, under thirty thousand dollars a year. So the amendment would have to be tailored, you know, just to protect, you know, to protect seniors. And, you know, the, the vulnerable, you know, vulnerable, vulnerable citizens that can't afford to, to, to have coun-, that can't afford to have council. So, you know, to make it more, make it more of a, a, a process, because we don't know what's in the minds of, you know, these judges. And, you know, a lot of, uh, there, there may be a lot of occasions that, you know, tenants, tenants feel. You know, they're criminalized in this, in this.
What I'm saying, that was, I just gave you an example where it seems to me that person being criminalized. Would be warranted, because it was a home invader.
With the pandemic, I'm talking about, we're just, because of the pandemic.
Yeah.
You know, there, you know, people have lost their job, people have lost their jobs, lost their, many sort of, many sort of income because, because of the pandemic and. You know, folks are getting evicted, you know. You know, folks are getting evicted, and they're, they can't, they can't afford representation. Because of, because of loss of income due to this, that, or the other.
I understand. Yeah, I mean, and that, that, I just wanted to bring up that there is another. Situation that could arise that we also maybe could work into when we're doing.
Yeah, that has to be worked out in, in that, in that.
Yeah, it it would be a different clause or a different section of things, but it would seem that. I think there needs to be some kind of evidence presented that the person being the tenant really is a tenant. You know, in other words. Right, I agree, there was no lease, you see, cause there was no, you see where I'm going. Yes, um, Ms., Mrs. Bryant.
Thank you, um.
Thank you. Um, I actually had a, a question, a question, and I'll ask that, but just to kind of help this conversation along that my husband was referring to. Um, there is a, a Sixth Amendment right to counsel in criminal cases because of the potential deprivation of, of liberty. And so we all know there's a whole intelligent defense system built around having court-appointed attorneys if a person can't afford a lawyer. There has been a movement around the country that kind of ebbs and flows as to whether or not a similar right should be afforded to poor people in certain civil cases like landlord tenant. And so that's what my husband is referring to, because, um, uh, because in the vast majority of eviction cases, landlords are represented by counsel because they can afford legal counsel, but tenants are not necessarily represented by, uh, by lawyers. And so, there's a sense that there's an imbalance, and that that may be, in fact, an access to justice issue. So that is what I believe my, my husband is referring to.
Okay, I understand. It's about representation.
Yeah, just real quick, and just real quick, uh, they are, there are cities that does have this, uh, right to counsel.
Okay.
Uh, Toledo, Ohio, they have it, um, Philadelphia, Philadelphia, Phil- Philadelphia, Seattle, they have, they have, they have forms of it.
So Detroit does not have anything, any tenant representative available?
No.
They do offer it, um, it, it, uh, I'm stumbling. I don't do landlord, uh, a lot of landlord tenant work. I am an attorney by trade, uh, but that's not an area I regularly practice in. But the last time I practiced in the thirty-sixth District Court, there are agencies, um, on hand to assist tenants, you know, the day of the hearing, um, but the problem we have overall in our justice system, initial with no exception, is that we have more people who need help than lawyers who are able to help them. And so we have to come up with, with systems for, uh, for helping to make it work. Uh, but there are resources at the thirty-sixth District Court for people who need, uh, who need attorneys and may not be able to afford them. And I believe this through the, I can't think of the name of the agency right now.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think, I'm thinking of something like the Tenant Union or something.
No, no, no.
Well, let's sure, let's sure, let's sure legal aid.
Well, there's, let's sure legal aid, but there's a program there, it's a, it's a housing.
Okay.
I just can't think of it. But I want to ask my question, but we can keep talking about this if we want to.
Well, before, before we do that, I wanted to recognize, um, Councilmember-elect Letitia Johnson. She had her hand up.
Yeah, so I'd just like to make a comment about that. Uh, I believe there are several new incoming council members who met with a group of attorneys that are looking to, um, get support for that right to counsel legislation within, uh, City Hall. And just, I believe Saturday, Friday or Saturday, um, we were all made aware of sixty million dollars, um, that will ultimately be a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars that are available for eviction assistance and legal representation. Um, it is believed that this is a way to provide resources without necessarily supporting that right to counsel legislation, um, but there are currently resources that are available. I'm not sure who those dollars are being disseminated by and how residents at this point can seek assistance. Um, but, uh, as I find that information, I'll definitely share it with you all, so you can add it into the minutes.
Yeah, I just.
Thank you.
Yeah, just because I just want, I mean, I wanted to just have, what is that, has that, you know, just period. I mean, I, I mean, it's cool with the money and all, that seems like, uh, that's like a temporary stop, a stopgap, uh, measure, which is fine. But I would want just to have, just to order sending books that, uh, tenants would have the right to, to seek legal representation. Just have legal, just, you know, like I said, it has, it, the amendment has to be crafted in a way like, you know, if they're a senior, a senior or low income, or, you know, a single mother, or whatever.
Okay, thank you. And, um, it, it sounds like this could be a topic, perhaps could be an agenda item at a future meeting, or you could make it an agenda item at your next meeting, one of the two. Um.
Okay, um.
Yeah, that definitely sounds like something you could do a presentation on. Uh, before, okay, I'm gonna recognize, um.
Scotty.
Hold on. Karen, um, from the Dickerson Black Club, but then I need to go back, so we have some people on Zoom that I need to recognize as well. Um, so, but especially Karen Knox, who has returned. But quickly, go ahead.
Okay, go for it. I don't know if any of you still know you were, um, District Board, Riverbend, County Council, okay? Uh, Jay Henderson. Okay, there was supposed to be eight hundred thousand dollars that was given from, uh, Chrysler, or what's the name?
Stellantis.
Yeah. So, my thing is supposed to have been broken up by Benito State Department, Green Park Club, okay? So, we're not getting any feedback on where that money's been used, how it's been utilized. They haven't been in a meeting. I have spoken to Mr. Henderson. I want to know what's going on, where it's been used, how. I was told by him, and I hope he's on here listening, uh, that it's supposed to be utilized between a library or a, uh, park or something, okay? But my thing is, if it's a conflict between, say, from Condes to Altar Road, Jefferson to Mac, then why aren't the community being told, or why isn't any information being put out? Because we know nothing, other than what I get out of them or try to get out of them.
And this CAC should have been informed about that, because the city council is supposed to inform the CAC about any motions, votes, or anything that's affecting this district specifically, which that is. Um, Councilmember, um, Johnson, I need to hold, or elect, Johnson, I need to hold, because I really need to get to these people here on Zoom.
Let me just add this very quickly, though, but you may want to ask for someone from the NAC, the Stellantis NAC, to come and provide some, a response to that question.
Right, right.
Or Mr.
No, the NAC is the Neighborhood Advisory Council that was specifically set up to work with Stellantis on the community benefits.
I'm getting, I'm getting from around here, around there, I want to.
It, it should be the NAC. The NAC is the entity that was working directly with Stellantis, so they should know all of the agreements that were provided by Stellantis to the community. They should be able to give an update on that, so.
And that's what I was trying to get, you know, because I, I started this block club, I'm gonna hurry up. I started this block club in nineteen ninety-eight. I'm the one that started it. I let it go for, for too good reason. People asked me to take it back, so I got real like this recently. And so, I'm like, trying to get on topic right now.
Okay, and you know, you don't, yes, we could go back to that, but I do, as a procedural matter, need to get to these people on Zoom. Um, first of all, Karen Knox, welcome back. Um, in your absence, we had a vote that you, we have not had a quorum for any votes. Um, we had a vote to approve the minutes as amended. Do you need to hear the amended minutes, or would you welcome a vote on that?
I'll welcome a vote.
Okay, so are you approving or disapproving of the amended minutes?
I, I, I had, well, we went over, I, I, I thought I was hearing on the vote when I said, um, I say yay, I thought I was hearing when we voted that.
Oh, okay, we must have noticed you missing when I went to the roll call stuff. Okay, well, then we do have, then it was a four-person vote on the minutes to approve. So, um.
For the amended minutes and for the minutes itself?
For the amended minutes. So Secretary Creswell, you could put that into the record. The other thing we voted on was we're gonna table until the December meeting a discussion of, um, and I'm trying to remember the exact, well, here I'm looking, I can look at that, at what it says here. We called it the, um, Planning Letter or News Conference on the Inavailability of Sidewalks and Other Apparent Unfairness Concerning Residents Living North by Ninety-four in District Four. We're tabling that for the December meeting. There was another thing we voted.
Okay, um, uh, you know, on these lots and stuff, we still, I'm still, and other people are still unable to get the sidewalks put in. They're refusing to do that, which is holding up purchasing lots.
Didn't, didn't Councilwoman-elect, uh, Johnson speak about that at our last meeting?
Um, she's here to answer you on that.
I, I did. I had a question about it. Um, it was in particular around a neighborhood park that the city had put in, and they, they have actually come in to repair those sidewalks. Um, so, I might ask Ms. Knox if she, if, if the sidewalks are, were, if they were demolished, if a house was demolished and they ruined the sidewalks, is that the issue? Or is there a tree that's uplifting the sidewalk?
It's both. Um, it, it's both. The tree is uplifting, the house is demolished, and, um, the sidewalk was torn up. And they saying that the house, that, the, the sidewalk was already there, like that. Either way it goes, the city needs to fix it, because when you walk up the street, um, and I'm one of those people that walk, I have to walk in the street because there's no sidewalk. And that's dangerous now and for me, for, but young people also. So I've complained to the city about this, um, the sidewalk being gone here, and they have done nothing.
Do you have the address to provide the address of the area or a general location?
Yeah, one-two-one-four-five Glenfield.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I'll have somebody take a look into it.
Thank you.
Okay. So we. That was Karen Knox. And so, yeah, she's back on the discussion. Um, so Karen, as far as anything regarding drafting a letter or a press conference, um, would you be okay with tabling that to the December meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so this, this, and, and what you've just been discussing still actually falls under the current agenda of, um, community concerns and, um, plans of action. So we're doing that still, and that's good. So, we're back on track. Was there any other motion that we voted on that we wanted to?
No, that was it.
Approval of?
That was it.
Okay, okay.
The best, the best, the best, then the motion to table, uh.
Okay. Was, okay, and I do need, as a matter of orders of the day, I do need to wrap this part of the, the meeting up fairly quickly. And also, I need to, um, recognize Tammy Black, who's on Zoom. Um, quickly, though, um, Ms. Bryant has her hand up again. Yes?
Well, I just wanted to, um, ask if the council was going to consider asking, um, the incoming council to follow up regarding item sixteen in your minutes from the last meeting relative to the DPW director. The minutes indicate that that person lives in our district, and there was a query about whether or not the council could schedule the director to come to, uh, one of the meetings to discuss speed humps and bumps.
Okay, um, that's a good question. Um.
I can ask them. You want me to?
You know them?
Yeah, I know Ryan very well.
Okay, so we'll put on the record that the plan of action concerning the speed humps, speed bumps, and the minute item sixteen from last meeting is that Sandra Turner Handy will follow up with that person. What's his name?
Ron Brundridge.
Ron. D-R.
What, okay. B-B-U-N-D as in David.
R-N-D.
R-I-D-G-E. Brundridge.
Bundridge.
Brundage.
Oh, there's an R. B-R-U?
Yeah, take out the second R.
Brundage.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, now Tammy Black um, had previously communicated with me that she was, um, very enthusiastically pursuing the write-in candidacy for, um, Community Advisory Council, um, starting in twenty twenty-two. Um, and at which point I informed her that the Declaration of Intent needed to be on file um, with the county clerk in order for us to, um, in order for the canvassers and the, um, election personnel to count the, um, to count that right, any write-in vote for her. Um, and that the deadline had passed. And at the time, I said there being no one else apparently interested in filling that post, that I would recommend her, um, make, uh, you know, a resolution, which is resolutions by nature are non-binding, non-binding, that she, um, be chosen to fill that. Since that time, Sandra Turner Handy, also present, has brought up that she was also, um, in a similar situation. Now, I don't know, I may just give each of you a moment to talk about that. Um, Tammy, if you go first.
Yes, I, well, I didn't know that I had to do the declaration, and I was very much interested. You know, all the neighbors were saying, you should do it, you should run. Um, you, you would be, add a spark to the, um, Community Advisory Council, um, helping to make, you know, hard decisions and working with the team. So I decided to, uh, have it written in, and then once I talked to you, Scotty, I found out that, you know, that I would need to go through the process of the county clerk's office, which I didn't know. So, and, and in turn, after I talked to you, I actually talked to Karen, and I told Karen what I was pursuing, and she said she's already on this, this board, that she would support me being a part of, um, the council. So, I, I would really like to be a part of this council to help to make those decisions and come up with answers for questions that's being asked like tonight, um, for, for our district, because I've done a lot of work in our district. I'm still doing a lot of important work in our district. And I just think I would bring a, a, a piece that needs to be brought to this council.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Handy.
Uh, I currently sit in a appointed seat on the council. Uh, have been served only, um, seven months at this point. I think that I brought a very well-organized uh, voice to the council from my various roles within the community north of I ninety-four. Uh, so I am requesting reappointment to the council, uh, for twenty twenty-two. Uh, Tammy is my, is my buddy, my, my, one of my, my, she rose in the fight to make this a better community. So, I, I do think that she would add a lot to the council. Uh, I hate that Karen is choosing not to come back on the council, because, uh, for a long time, she was the only person carrying the voice of, um, District Four residents north of I ninety-four until I came on, uh, as a partner for this part of the district. I do see that we do have someone that has chosen to be a write-in from this side of ninety-four, which is always welcome, because we're very underrepresented, uh, within the larger scope of the district. So I think that's awesome, but I am requesting reappointment to the council. And at this point, I am old enough to fulfill the senior role on the council.
Okay, so, so, um, Sandra Turner Handy, um, let me just ask, would you be, I mean, because I, I, I said I would make a resolution, and then I, you know, now I want to, I mean, I don't want to, because it didn't seem to be any conflict involved in doing that, but are you saying that you would rather first seek the appointment to fill the vacancy? And if that's not available, be senior issues, or would you rather open it up and, and allow Tammy to be appointed to it, and then run senior issues?
Uh, I would, I would rather open it up and allow Tammy, uh, to be appointed. as a general member. And I would hope to be appointed to the senior seat.
Okay, then I'm going to make a non-binding, as all resolutions are, it's redundant, it's totally non-binding. It's totally at the discretion of the council member what appointments are made for filling vacancies. Regarding senior issues rep, the, the council representative may pick from a list provided by, not us, but by the next CAC, will be comprised of some of the people here tonight. And Sandra, you will need to ask them to put you on that list. Do you understand that?
Uh, I do understand that. How many open seats do we have for appointments, Scotty? I can't remember.
We have one open seat as a vacancy to be filled by appointment because we had three properly documented writing candidates and one balloted candidate. And again, the, those people are Dennis Bryant, who is here right now, was balloted and elected by a huge margin. I don't remember the number, but I guess it's in the ninety, nineties or a hundred percent or something.
His wife knows, probably eight thousand votes.
If I was, if I was, if I was a student in your class, Scotty, I would get an A or A minus.
There you go. Yeah. Oh, minus, okay. All right. Um, but then we have, and then Adrian Green, he got his declaration of intent. As long as they count one of the votes for him, he's in. And we have, and I don't know where she is, but we have Jocelyn Harris, who is a member of the current CAC, who will be, will be reelected as a writing candidate, who had her certificate of declaration of intent, I mean, in. And then we have Rose Jones, who also had her declaration of intent in, who is not at the meeting, but she will also be in the future. So that leaves one vacancy, and that's why I brought that up, is Tammy would have, if she had her declaration of intent in, and no one else did, she would have automatically gotten that post. Um, so I guess at this point, knowing what we know, um, is there any second to a non-binding resolution that the, that we ask? That the vacancy for, and this I guess would be directed to both, well, it'd be directed to our council members here. Um, that Tammy, that we recommend as the outgoing CAC, Tammy Black to fill that vacancy of the incoming CAC.
Point of order.
Yes.
Would, would she, would she have to wait until the, the councilwoman elect the sworn in?
She's getting sworn in in December.
We see the appointment or the recommendation from the new CAC. So this is, this is very premature.
Yeah, that's.
No, the recommendations, the appointment for the CAC does not have to come, the appointment for the vacancy does not have to come from the council, from the CAC. That comes from the council person.
Not only does it not have to, it doesn't. That's why I said this is purely a non-binding resolution, which council member Johnson believes is premature. Well, you know, there hasn't been a second. If there isn't a second, I could just say it dies for lack of a second.
Well, I think you still can make the recommendation because it's all about who the council person appoints, not the CAC.
The appointment is not available until January though, right?
Yes.
That's correct. Well, it's totally non-binding. It's a statement of opinion. So I don't really see it as necessarily.
It doesn't have anything to do with me. It's more about whether or not there is an appointment available currently for the current term that the CAC is serving today.
There is not unless we find a youth person. Hey, that's something, we need to talk about that. We have, we actually have someone who could appoint a youth person if one were available.
So back to, back to the.
We will.
No, all this council is doing at this point is, at this point, all this council is doing is agreeing to make a recommendation to our city council elect on an appointment, just a recommendation. That's what we're voting on, is the fact that we support a recommendation, which is not premature.
Sort of an endorsement. We're endorsing Tammy Black.
But this is coming from us as a recommendation, that not saying that, that the council person has to follow our recommendation.
Absolutely not. The council person doesn't need to follow any recommendation on filling a vacancy.
We're just making, we are voting on making a recommendation of a person that this current CAC supports, which is fine.
So are you, is this a second to that motion or not?
Yes.
It is. Okay, so then it's still as light. Um, I'd like to make an amendment to my own motion and simply make it an endorsement because I think any other language would maybe make it more confusing.
Does he support that amendment?
There's no support on that amendment? Okay, I would go.
I will, I will support the change from resolution to endorsement.
Okay, now the next thing comes up, can we make endorsements?
We can, we can, we can.
You know, actually, I'm starting to see a problem here.
I was, I was saying no.
No.
I'm going to withdraw my motion, just because I'm starting to see problems. And Tammy, I will make a personal endorsement off the table about this, because we had discussed, hold on.
Okay.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna take a point of personal privilege here to say, I had, we already discussed the possibility of individual recommendations. And I'm starting to feel like that's what we need to do, because it just occurred to me, a public body can't endorse a candidate, which she becomes when we put it that way.
That's why you were making a recommendation, is what I said. We are just making a recommendation.
Right. And what I'm seeing now.
You the one that wanted to change the word to endorsement.
I know. And that made me aware of what I was actually doing. And so doing, I also made me aware that actually changing wording doesn't change what I'm doing. So I'm actually now going to withdraw that and I will personally make such a recommendation on my own as private citizen, Scotty Bowman, will be a private citizen in the full sense at the end of the year. But currently, as an individual, Scotty Bowman, who happens to be in this office later, but not during the meeting. Uh, okay. Yeah, and I am now realizing that I really overstepped earlier. And I didn't think it would be controversial, but now I'm realizing there's, there are problems to it. Um, is there any desire to move on this topic or can I just move along? Okay, well, we did have a second. I withdrew a motion. But, I mean, if other people want to continue it, by Robert's rule, I have to allow it. Okay, no one else doesn't want to continue. If there's no objection, we're moving on. Um.
So there, so there was never a motion on the table?
I withdrew my motion. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna explain what I, what, I think it's problematic to do anything, an endorsement by any other name of a candidate, by a public body, I now, I now believe is problematic. It's not within the context of the rules that are set up for such things. Um, and so what I will urge people individually to lobby for people that they wish to lobby for or not, they don't want to do it. You know, we're all individuals on that level. So I'm, Tammy, do you understand what we're all talking about here?
Yes, yes, I do.
Okay, so we're.
Well, I can't do it because I am a state lobbyist. So I can't lobby for anybody.
Oh, yeah, really complicated. Okay. I'm, I'm moving to the next agenda item. We're way past orders of the day. And I definitely don't want to keep people too far over time, though we're already over time. Um, and so here we go. Um, new business, CAC election results. Quickly, we already, we went over that. I'll just restate them really quick. Dennis Bryant, um, clearly a guy by a huge margin, however many votes, is clearly elected to be on the next CAC. I was in a similar situation a year ago. Um, we have write-in candidates, and those who are certified to be write-in candidates, and I got this from the clerk, though I don't have any counts from the clerk, simply that they did their declaration of intents, or Adrian Green. And Adrian here, I'm going to point this over here again, now that we don't have the agenda on the screen. Adrian, you want to stand up and be recognized here? Adrian Green. And we have, and Dennis Bryant, you want to wave? Wave at the camera here. There you go, there's it. Okay, good. So, yeah, and we got Jocelyn Harris, who has been attending our meetings, but isn't it this one? And we have, I'm, I'm sorry, Rose Jones, who is not present. And, yeah, those are the people that will be elected. Now, I advise them again, please contact the city clerk. Now, the person I went through is probably a good person to talk to is, I'm trying to remember. Now I'm having a brain gap here. Deputy clerk. He swore me, Adrian? Why am I having this, this blackout? All right. He swore us, and I wanted to recommend you to the person that swore us in, but contact the city clerk's office. Yes, sir?
I think, and there was a lady, I think there's also a lady that.
Right, who was also involved in transmitting the documents. I don't know why, I've had numerous correspondences with this person in that. Andre Gilbert. It was Andre, not Adrian. Andre Gilbert. Um, he's the person who would probably swear you in. I mean, who knows, maybe Janice Winfrey will. But, but I don't think any of us were sworn in by Winfrey. I think we're all sworn in by Gilbert, who acts on her behalf. So, um, in any case, take care of that before, if you can even do it before the first of the month, it would be the best. Because then that way, whenever you meet up to have the meetings, that you will be, that you can actually have a quorum and be able to say unambiguously, without having to make some of the arguments I had to make about the meaning of elected member and so on. You won't have to worry about it. You got a quorum for all four of you are sworn in at the beginning. None of the issues that came up on the beginning of my term will be a problem for you. Um, next part, yeah.
They may insist that maybe swear in on New Year's Day, if not in December. That might be a problem.
In which case, that's okay, and then do it as soon as you can.
Well, yeah, they normally don't do it on New Year's Day. They have a certain day, like, within the first couple of weeks that they do their swearing in.
Yeah. Yeah, I know technically the terms begin on New Year's Day at noon. Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, there is nothing other than technically that offices exist because of that document. Okay, now, um, so I should just say the, the terms do begin at noon. All right, next, on the, under the new business, I had how redistricting will affect the future of the CAC. And I have to make this ridiculously brief, all, all of what's left here. Um, but quickly, here's why I bring it up as an issue. Um, I'm seeing, now this CAC, if you look at municipal code, it's by number. It says District Seven did blah, blah, blah. And it doesn't literally say that, but you get my point. Um, a, and it lists the fulfilling the requirements and then says they have established a community advisory council. While it hasn't been fully integrated into the online municipal code, there is a posting of changes to it. And in those changes is the same kind of language for District Four. These are by numbers. My interest, and I had messaged the clerk about this, and also asked that if anyone else wishes to refer me to someone else, get an answer, I'd like to get it. Is when we are redistricted, will the new CAC, will, will the CAC then be assigned to, in other words, will District Four automatically have a CAC no matter where District Four is? Excuse me for a minute.
But, but I can answer that, Scotty. I've been a.
That is, that is my understanding. The difference, shape, and size, and amount, and area, and the city council, district is, so shall the CAC be. It's your match.
Now, where, where are you basing that on?
This is from, I, this is that fact.
Well, well. Okay, redistricting will not change the boundaries of the city council districts. Redistricting will change the boundaries of our state and federal districts, not our council districts.
That is not what I read in the municipal code or the charter.
Our, our city council districts, the lines were drawn by population.
Right, and the population shifted. And it says based on the most recent census or something like that.
But I thought that was just for states, state senate, state house.
And the federal government.
I'm basing what I'm saying on what I read in the city charter, not in the state legislative.
What you have to remember, Scotty, is that our district is changing on the state level and the federal level because we will be incorporating less of Detroit and more of McComb County.
All right, no, I'm not, I'm not even going to go there. I'm not going to talk about.
But, but what I'm saying is that our district itself cannot go along the party, the redistricting lines, because they go outside of the city.
Yeah, I'm not talking about that. I misunderstood that. I'm purely talking about the council district. And in the charter, it does say that they will be changed following a census to reflect the population. It's in there.
Okay.
Which means that they're just going to, whereas the lines that were drawn previously were based on, I think, a hundred and sixty-two thousand people in an area. Well, we've lost population. So the, it will probably be that they reduce the number required to make up a district, because we've lost over a hundred thousand people since the last census.
Okay, now, Ms. Johnson seemed to agree, but Ms. Johnson, do you know what I'm referring to? And why would I be wrong? Or maybe we're not disagreeing?
I, I know what you're referring to, but I don't know if you're asking whether or not the redistricting that's taking place right now within the state is going to affect city council districts. Is that your question?
No, what I'm talking about is the city council district redistricting.
But, but city council lines are not being redrawn right now as a result of the census.
Okay.
You're saying they will not be redrawn before the next municipal election, though?
I don't know what that process looks like within the city, but within this redistricting conversation that we're having with the state, that will not affect city council districts.
Okay.
Okay, I, I agree with you there. I, I, I think we're misunderstanding each other a little.
No, so I, I feel like you're asking whether or not because of the census numbers, whether or not the city council districts are going to be redrawn. I'm not sure when that actually takes place. Whether or not the city council districts are going to be redrawn. I'm not sure when that actually takes place. As a result of the census population.
I was understanding that that the CAC districts will match city council districts. Right, okay.
Yeah, the CAC districts do match the city coun- I guess what my issue was is. When, and I assumed it's a when and not an if, these, the council district boundaries change. Whether or not the numbering. Is what determines whether or not, because not every district has a CAC. Is that what determines? Is the is the number four going to be bound to the CAC in other words?
The way I understand it, yes.
Yeah, okay, I think I, and I do think we need more research on that. Um, hopefully by December, there will be an answer. Um, because then there's also the matter, and the reason I bring this up further is District Five. Is where this this body was over a year ago, which is District Five. In fact, they're trying to be in the recent elections and they missed it. Was they have actually had petitions certified to create a CAC. But it has not met gone through all the formalisms that the city council has to do to make it. Fully make it established as far as practical purposes go, even though it's technically established by statute or by charter. Um, and because of that, they have a delay, and so they will probably be on the ballot in twenty twenty. Now, I don't know if. I mean, twenty twenty-two, the same way, um, I was on the ballot in twenty twenty. The new candidates will be on the ballot in twenty twenty-two. For the CAC and whether or not the boundaries are redrawn by then or not would definitely have some effect. On their election, though obviously it won't have any effect on, um, the current CAC. Because those keep serving with the boundaries they have when they came in. Yeah.
Yeah, point of order, uh, you're talking about for District Four, right? I thought it was every municipal municipal election. And the next municipal election would be twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, well.
Unless you unless you unless another district.
No, for District Four, you're fine.
Yeah, it won't be till twenty twenty-five.
Right, what I'm talking about is is other districts that just got CACs, like District Five. They will be on the twenty twenty-two ballot, because just like, um, I was on the twenty twenty ballot. And Gregory was a writing candidate on the twenty twenty ballot, because the way the language is newly established, CACs. Are in the next general election, regardless of what kind of election, whether it's presidential or gubernatorial or municipal or what. That's what, that's where that was from. Well, it looks like we don't have a clear answer, so I don't want to keep talking in circles. I want to make sure I actually know for sure next time we talk about it, so that is definitely going to be an unfinished business item. Um, I'll make a note here, unfinished.
I know you're making it unfinished business item, but I will tell you this. The city will take its population from the census, divide it up into the seven districts. To come up with a even number for each of the districts, and that's how it will be drawn.
Right, and when they number them, see, I'm wondering if the numbering has to be at all related to the current numbering. I mean, could this region be in District Seven and District Four be somewhere on the west side and so on? You see where I'm going? Or whether they try to keep it close?
I don't know.
Well, yeah, that's the kind of thing, it's kind of anyway. The charter is not changing, right?
No, no, but but, okay, to to finish up, it's going to still be within the city council district. Which is maybe one, two, three, two, seven.
It's not happening right now, but let's, um, if you want to do research, just research it.
That's what I think is a great idea. Yes, um, and so I'm going to move along here. We have, um. The youth advisor thing, you know, but basically here's the deal. It's nine oh four. Um, so there's actually a quick way to to wrap this up. Um, orders of the day would be that long ago, this should have, um, we should have, um, but no one called orders of the day. But if someone does, it requires two-thirds to continue. Um. So I will just say that there being no objections, I'm going to skip over Agenda Item C. I think we said enough about youth advisor position for now, anyway. Uh, we don't have one right now, this is short of it. Um, location of meeting, that's a, that's a good one, maybe to, um, bring up before we close. Do anyone, any recommendations on a location? Because we already met here twice. We've met Morningside three times. We're really supposed to be more diverse in our locations than that. Um, any recommendations, um? Church by Jefferson, is anyone connected with that church here?
How about we contact Pastor Gladden and come back on the other side of ninety-four this time?
Okay, um, is this someone you're in contact with, Sandra Turner?
Yeah, Pastor Gladden has, uh, both Mount Calvary and, um. Charity Lutheran, so he has two churches on this side of ninety-four.
Mount Calvary and Charity Lutheran. And, uh, the pastor's name again is?
Uh, Dietrich Gladden.
Gladden. That G L A D D E N?
Correct.
And I'll I'll mention that you will be, um, getting, you'll you'll handle that.
I'll reach out to him.
Point of order, Chair.
Yes.
Uh, is there, is is is, can we use some space over at either the fifth precinct or the ninth precinct to have our meeting?
They're, they're not open fully back up for the public.
Okay, so it's just. So, okay, so it's just, so it's just, uh, limited.
Yeah, I I'm the president over at the ninth, and we we don't have any of our meetings there currently. Not even our planning, uh, executive meetings until they open back up fully.
Also, I was going to add something, um, to that, the suggestion. The, um, charter says where to have meetings in donated facilities. And I've interpreted that to mean not in city buildings. And so, you know, much like we don't have, we don't use the city council chambers to meet on their off days or anything like that. Or any of their committee rooms and so on. I I don't think that it would be, um, in compliance. To hold it within, obviously, a city, um, building such as a, um, police station precinct. Or headquarters or anything like that.
Scotty?
Yes.
Scotty, I know I'm not a part yet, but, um, Miss, uh, Pastor McCray on, um, Newport. Um, I'm sure he will let you have meetings down here near Jefferson. He's right off of Newport, Pastor McCray. Uh, his Jordan Missionary Baptist Church on Newport.
Okay, what I'm going to do is, we already talked with, um, Sandra Turner Handy, he's going to talk with Pastor Gladden. What I'll say is, now you two talk to each other quite a bit, right?
Yeah, me and Sandra talk.
Yeah.
Right, so if that doesn't pan out, then we can use that other suggestion that you made, um, as a backup. And you two can work that out?
Okay, sounds good.
Because what we try to do is to make sure that we're inclusive of the whole district. So we try to go back and forth across ninety-four, so residents on the other side can also get a chance to participate.
Right, and I I believe where you're talking about Newport is probably on this side of ninety-four, right? The location she was referring to is on this side ninety-four.
But we, but we would, we need to also find somewhere on that west area of the district over there, uh, Connor. Uh, Connor Six Mile, uh, Gunston over there. That's still part of, that's part of District Four too, so.
It is.
Yes.
That's where I, that's that's where I stay. I'm on, I'm on College of Gunston, so.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I I gotta, I gotta advocate for my neighborhood, advocate for my neighbors.
I advocated, why you think we meet on the other side of ninety-four?
I I mean, I understand.
Okay.
We'll have to talk about that.
Um, right now, I'm going to go with Sandra Turner Handy, um, which she wants to work out. And if you, you, everyone should exchange information, so I I I'll try to get us all in touch with each other. As far as the incoming members. Uh, if there's no other, um, no objection. I would like to move to a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
Oh, no, I can't do that. That's not even legal. Okay, I'm sorry, I feel like we've been having them, but, okay, we're open to public comments. And what if the gentleman over here wanted to say so much? He just like left, he, he leave anything behind? I thought he was just going to the restroom and coming back or something. All right, well, anyway, um, let's go right for, okay, public comments, go, yes.
I'd just like to remind everyone that the District Four shred day is tomorrow. Tuesday, November ninth, from ten AM until three PM at the fifth precinct. You are allowed five boxes, up to five boxes of items.
Okay, everyone get that? District Four shred day tomorrow. Okay, ten to three at the fifth precinct, um, I should bring that up in case not everyone maybe know, knows where it is. It's on Connor, just, um, the south of. Yeah, Evan, thank you, thank you. Okay, any other public comments? This is open, anybody can make a public comment.
Okay, I just wanted to, I just want to let the people on Zoom know if they don't have my information. Again, I'm Dennis Bryant. Uh, my email is D Bryant seven one at gmail dot com. Again, that's D Bryant seven one at gmail dot com, and my phone number is.
I don't have a pen.
Go ahead, I'll write that.
I have to get my phone.
Three one three.
My phone number is three one three.
Hold on, I'm putting it in my phone.
I'm writing it down.
Okay.
Three one three. Two one eight. Three 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 eight. And I think most of you are, I'm friends, I think I'm friends with a couple of you all on Facebook, I think. Um, yeah, my phone number is three one three, two one eight, three 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 eight. And again, my name is Dennis Bryant, newly elected, newly elected member of the Community Advisory Council District.
Okay, and, um, Karen, I'm sorry, Karen, keep forgetting her. Patterson, okay, I need to write this down. Oh, you got it, okay, Karen Patterson, please, um, please, go ahead. I would, that that's important, and thank you for bringing that up here. I would also encourage you to, um. Also contact the, um, Board of Police Commissioners and bring that up as a, um. You can actually make it a complaint, I guess, about service from the fifth precinct. Are you referring to response time?
No, they they won't.
I can't hear her, they won't do what?
I'm sorry, um, I was in contact with Commander Hewing.
Yeah.
Uh, months ago, and, uh, we had a real bad problem with renters. And they continue to throw outrageous parties, and he specifically gave me names of officers that be on duty. And then they did it for maybe like a week or two, and then that went out the windows, like everybody was either busy or off. And then I actually was in contact with, uh, Rodney Liggins, and, uh. You know, he tried to help his best he could, you know, he talked to Commander Hewing, he also, uh, stood up there and, you know. Called the precinct himself to try to get his patrols, but then that was short-lived also, you know what I'm saying? Like I said, I found out that, uh, we have renters on our block that's actually more or less are squatting, you know what I'm saying? Because one previous person that lived on our block actually bought the homes, but never got the official names of the homeowners off. You know, and he's renting to other people. They're, you know, doing whatever. It's like chaos sometimes. And I have to keep recalling and calling and calling, and I'm not getting any police response at all.
They're getting no response, so that's that.
Have you talked to your MPO?
Have you gone back to youing about that?
No, I don't want to rock the boat, you know what I'm saying? I don't want to, uh, bite that hand, but at the same time.
Have you?
Find a diligent way to go about it, like, okay, we need policing, but like, maybe after I talk to him. We had a policing cruiser come down Dickerson, maybe once, maybe twice a month, that's it. Yeah, I talked to my neighborhood policing officer. I did really have a good one, and, you know, he got, uh, a bunch of them to leave the house. But then soon as that happened, probably two weeks later, he moved more people in.
Have you talked with Sergeant Turner over there?
No, I haven't.
Talked with Sergeant Turner over there? We had him over here in the ninth. And they, he was on ball, he was on point with what he did.
Okay, I appreciate that, because like I said, I'm not getting any help at all, and I work from home, so it's just like, man. I'm hearing a lot of music here, I'm hearing a lot of music there, then, uh, older couple at the end of our block, because we're a family block. Um, they end up passing last year due to COVID, and so their kids sold the houses, the section eight house. So now they're throwing parties, so I got three, uh, houses around me doing full blast sometimes around the summer, and I can't even concentrate on my computer.
And we do have a noise ordinance in the city. We have, we have a noise ordinance.
Yeah, he he does, he did mention that, Mr. Liggins did mention that, and he said, you know, there's not a certain time of day, it's actually all throughout the day.
That's right.
Built has a certain decimal, and that's what he tried to relate to Hewing. Still nothing.
Okay, yeah, so there there is the other option, which, again, um, one more option you can try out. Is you can also try the Board of Police Commissioners. There's actually a forum, if you search the city website. Search for OCI. Stands for Office of Chief Investigator, if you just search for OCI, there's a complaint form.
Okay.
And, um, you can also, um, bring it up at comments at their meetings, which are on Thursdays at three PM. And they're on Zoom. So that's one more option, not that you shouldn't follow up on the other options, including that sergeant that Ms. Turner mentioned. Um, but there are, that, that, then after that, I really can't think of any more options, but that's, that's quite, there's more left.
And I have to ask, do you attend the fifth precinct's meetings?
Okay, and so, um, yeah, um, Karen Patterson saying she attends the meetings and.
No, I was asking the young man.
Not being recognized by whom?
No, no, ma'am, I haven't.
Karen, Ms. Patterson, who are they, who's not recognizing you?
Yeah, they have a little.
That sounds like something to put on a complaint form.
But I'm sorry, um, can you give me the officer's name one more time, please?
Sergeant Ronaldo Turner.
All right, thank you.
And tell them, say Sandra told me to call you. You know, I keep my MPOs on point over here. They do what they're supposed to do.
Okay, well, um, if I may be recognized on this same subject.
Okay, quickly.
Okay, so Ms. Sandra, I will, um, I think I'm going to need to talk to you. I'm I'm Erica Bryant, uh, Dennis Bryant's wife of exactly three weeks. And there are similar. Thank you, and there are similar issues, um, over in the in the neighborhood where we live, with the loud. The loud noise and things like that. I also work from home and have been working from home because of the pandemic. the loud noise and things like that. I also work from home and have been working from home because of the pandemic, and it's at the point now where it's like, what, I can't do Zoom court, I can't be on court, I can't talk to my clients because people are blasting their music. I have my MPO's name and cell phone number, and but.
Who's your MPO? Who's your MPO?
His last name is Johnson, and he's never, yeah, he's never bothered to come by to meet me in person. Um, I've texted them, I've texted, I've texted him pictures of evidence of.
What what's her name? What's a good day for him to come see you, because I'm gonna call him tonight. So you tell me what.
Ma'am, he can come any day. I literally work, I literally run from my practice.
Can I have him? I have your husband's number. Can I have him contact him to set up a time for him to come over there and see you, because I've been on him about that. Seriously, yes.
Yes, ma'am, I appreciate that.
Okay, you will be, you will be meeting Lester Johnson. In fact, I told him come summer, I'm gonna put him in the middle of the street on Gunston, and he gonna meet everybody.
This is not your first uh running with Officer Johnson.
Say that again.
I said, everybody, they, a lot of people have been calling you about Officer Johnson.
Only because he did not, when he got LaSalle College Park, he failed. He's also my MPO, but I don't, I have the rest of them, but he failed to meet the community over there. In fact, one of the community members over there, two of them that's over the LaSalle Park Association, were part of our Ninth Precinct. And so I've really been on him, that he has to get over into that community and meet the people in that community. That's his, that's his job. So I'm gonna make sure he does his job.
So it sounds like you've got something going on in two precincts, so we got the Ninth and the Fifth, because Ewing's in the Fifth.
Well, you know, we had Commander Russell, but we got rid of her.
Okay. All right, I need to, um, okay, I need to, um.
Wrap it up.
The one person who hasn't had a chance to comment, Judy Pencil, did you have anything you wanted to say on Citizen Comments before we close?
I have been talking to, um, kids, not about recreation, people are in major, you know, aside from the that's more long term, but um because Tim Colleen has said there was money for recreation. But uh we were talking about a splash park, I think it was very simple, like the one that's called Newwood. You know, it's really for the youngest children. Not a liability that we practice with at all, so wouldn't attract you. And it's um, so, but he said that in the past, we had one of the recognized parks, putting me at a small, you know, the pool, uh, like that, absolutely like Waldorf or Chandler Park, which already has a more expensive version, and I'm just a free thing, you know, like just, you know, comes and then it's so hot outside. Playing a few lot of the old, and I own an elephant, he's changing houses, you know. There isn't that much water that comes out of the water. At all, but nonetheless, something for the younger, but I'm moving much more, you know, moving more basketball. I see, and I'm still thinking of the um public school, you know. So I grew up with most wonderful recreations in the childhood, playing, bringing support equipment. I made these, you know, and we can bring the nine different kinds of crafts, one had all the craft. They were none. So I'm trying to, you know, there's a number of people that I've met. More recreation, many recreation, and some are next up. I would not expect them apart, you know, well, that's the other town or area. But um, I need Waldorf, or I'm interested in doing that. Um, a splash park perhaps, or something more other than sports, sports. Need more of the ride. So if anyone is interested, I will listen myself. That's um three one three, two zero eight, five times. Yeah, you know, basketball. Um, what's the, certainly it's a beautiful, but we need to get our children outside, and the nature more, too. I mean, I think if they fly, why not, then we're gonna do a little nature. Kind of comparison, you know, with some sort of acting people on there. Family stuff. What are in there? Stuff on you, that'll lead you towards a connection to nature, otherwise, you know, the future generations don't care about why we. Also, it's a great joy, wonderful. To balance our lives, we need more nature. He played in the field for hours that day, and I lived outside of eight months. So we have lots of field. And we were just out there, fell picking blackberries, just growled it up, and picking hollybobs and little pine. We just had a wonderful.
Okay.
We captured a bunch of that. Anyway, there's a few people that are interested, if anyone else here.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Um, seeing that we are about one hour past our scheduled close, is there, um, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn? Okay, is there a um, any discussion? We'll go to a roll call vote. Uh, Sandra Turner Handy.
Yay.
Yay, Karen Knox.
Yay.
Gregory Cresswell. Myself, yay. Uh, Sandra, um, just remember to um stop the recording.
Yes.